Good evening. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees are now convened in a board work session on Monday, March 7th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center located at 10300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Thursday, March 10th, 2022, regular board meeting agenda designated as action items, and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of the Trustees. As a Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. Audience members may not participate in the meeting outside the designated agenda items for citizen participation or public comment. Disruption of the meeting by any person, including the audience, is inappropriate and will be addressed by the Board President or the Board's counsel as the meeting parliamentarian. Continued or repeated disruption of any board meeting by words or action may result in removal or loss of the privilege to attend the meeting. Prior to this meeting, Board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on Comcast Channel 16 and the district website. They will also be available as video on demand on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. And mine is now turned off. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would also like to take the opportunity to recognize our community leadership committee members who are in attendance this evening. When I call your name, please stand so you may be recognized. Tanner Lamb, Nancy Frankel, Tana Yegi, Stacy Anderson, and Ryan Irving. The invocation, pledge of allegiance, vision and mission statement, recognitions, board comments, and citizen participation portions of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Thursday, March 10th, 2022. We will now proceed with public comments. The first is Stacy De Meyer. And to remind you, when the yellow light comes on, you have 30 seconds to wrap up. Once the beeping starts, I will ask you to conclude your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Stacy De Meyer, and tonight I'm speaking on Agenda Item 9D2. The funding of our district's libraries and the trust and autonomy we give to our librarians is of great importance. As a district, we are privileged to have a library at every school, as well as highly-trained librarians. Our district librarians have the skills needed to properly choose appropriate books for their school, as well as to ensure that a variety of topics are covered and that every student feels represented, so that when they go to the library, they can be sure to find a book that is a good fit for them. While extremely important, our school libraries aren't simply a place to give our students access to quality books during scheduled library time. Our school libraries are also crucial, a crucial supplement to the classroom. As a volunteer in my children's library at Keith Elementary, which by the way has an amazing librarian, Mrs. Budnick, I get to see a variety of ways that our school utilizes libraries. I've seen our librarians spend time hand-selecting books based on requests from teachers. I've seen classes come to the library to browse the nonfiction section for research projects. I've seen teachers encouraging their students to expand their reading skills by focusing on certain sections in the library. And just last week, Mrs. Budnick set up a mini polling location in our library for students to vote on their favorite Horn-Toe Tales book, which is a group of books selected by librarians in our district, an example of an ongoing collaboration that takes place amongst librarians throughout the year. I'd like to thank all of the librarians in our district. Contrary to recent attacks on your qualifications and motives, the most recent being elected officials attempting to prevent your access to certain vendors, you are appreciated and trusted by so many. I'd also like to thank the district for prioritizing libraries and their funding. Please continue with these efforts and please continue to trust our librarians with the responsibilities you have given them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alexi Swirsky.
Yes, I am addressing the $2.8 million to be voted on to be awarded to purchase library books and reference books. I surely hope that all of these materials are in line with the values that parents want for their children. Schools are to assist parents in educating their children, not replace them. Some of the books found in school libraries and curriculum nowadays would have led to arrest of teachers and staff that were promoting these materials or putting them in the schools just several years ago. Pornography has no place in schools. I surely hope Cyfair doesn't have indecent books in our curriculum, our plans to purchase any. Critical Race Theory also has no place in schools. We have a wonderful country with people working together to solve problems. Critical Race Theory teaches division, not unity. I was present in the Texas House hearing when this bill was being debated and formed and had many expert witnesses. And as Steve So says, "It promotes harmony in the classroom by prohibiting the teaching of racial superiority or collective guilt. And America's success is determined by your work, not your skin color." That's what needs to be taught. And I also want to thank the three new board members. They're all, I just love to hear what's going on and that they're working hard to ensure the best education for the many students in Cyfair ISD, and I shame on anyone who's attempted to slander any of them. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight.
That concludes our public comments. We will notice at the next meeting that we will have a new process for public comments and citizen participations. Patrons who have registered to speak may see the order listed on the screens to your right and to your left, and before your name is called, we will be asking you to move forward and sit in one of the two reserved seats on the front row. So we'll have that procedure in place when we meet again. We will now proceed with Agenda Item 7B of the reports portion of the agenda. The administration will provide a written report on the 2022 summer school plans for elementary, middle school, and high school. I think we have a brief presentation by Dr. Linda Macias.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. And this is a brief presentation that I'm going to provide for you today. Go on to the next slide, please. So our summer school plans have, oh, thank you, our summer school plans have not changed from last year. Probably the highlights that I want to share with you is that, once again, thank you, Board, we will be providing summer school at no charge to our students. And there is something in summer school for everyone. So if you look up there, these are our programs that we offered last year, all of these different camps. Our camps that are addressing literacy, and we also have an enrichment camp that is addressing math and literacy for our students who, they, they're not failing, but they're right there at the cusp of it. They just, they're, they're just barely made a passing grade or just barely right below that, and so we have a camp for them as well. And then we have a couple of language camps that we're excited about. We are gonna have our second year with our Chinese camp, and then we are adding a Spanish-language camp as well. And so we are excited about that opportunity as well. And then at middle school, again, we have the programs that we've offered, our original credit, our makeup credit, our accelerated instruction, which, which includes our, our algebra camp that you've heard about. And then at high school, again, the same type of programs in both middle and high school, we also have enrichment courses, again, for students who just want that extra support in reading and in math. They haven't, you know, they're just, they're okay, but they want to do some extra during the summer to, to be able to accelerate or, or just help avoid that, that summer slide. We have some fine arts camps also that we have going on this summer with, with just different band camps. So again, the most important thing I just wanted to share was that it is free to our, for our students, and there is something for everyone there, and if there are any questions, they can call my office and we'll be able to, happy to answer them. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And I think you meant questions from parents, right?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
What about questions from board members? I'll look to my right. Scott, questions?
Just a brief question. I guess recruitment for this is going to be going on with teachers and stuff. Do you think we'll have adequate enough teachers to support this effort?
That's, that's always, we had a challenge with that last year, Mr. Hendry, as well, and we increased our summer school pay for our teachers to, to help with that. But we have, we look for our best teachers, and, and that's what we have teaching these, these, the summer programs.
Awesome. Thank you.
Natalie Gilbert.
When do the parents actually have the date to, to submit their requests for summer school? Is it like later on in the, in the spring?
There, depending on the programs, the, the time to register is different. Our, our program that's, that's for the enrichment really goes on all through, through, through the school year. Our programs like Camp Summit, for example, that's our, that's our primary reading program. That one, we, we, we wait a little longer because that's based on reading levels. So we look for any child who is not on level in reading, and they all get invited to, to Camp Summit.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much, Natalie.
Now to my left, Luke.
No questions, only a comment. As a former teacher, I've just, I'm grateful for all the teachers that volunteer and do this role, because even though they're paid, believe me, it's volunteer.
Absolutely, Mr. Scan. We, I agree.
And I'm very, I'm very excited about this program.
Thank you.
And Debbie, it's kind of nice to be able to see you in person instead of the video monitor in front of your seat. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. It's good to be back. Believe me, isolation's not much fun. But just a comment, I have a grandson who has dyslexia, and Camp Summit was offered to him as a first grader. And when he first found out that he thought he had to go to summer school, oh my gosh, he'd have thought he was being tortured. But I was the one who took him and picked him up many days, and it just took the first week where our, our staff make it like a camp experience, and it's a lot of fun. They were learning things. People from the Science Center came out, and he got to hold a snake and all these, you know, which just terrified me. But anyway, they just made it such a fun learning experience, and I think that's why these programs make it, even though it's education and it's summer school, but make it so much fun, and our students really benefit. So to the teachers out there, if you're contemplating, I highly encourage you to participate in the summer school programs because the, the students really reap the benefits. And then a few years ago, I visited Camp Algebra during the summer over at Cypress Park, and that was amazing to see as well. So thank you to our teachers who do give up their summer for the benefit of our students.
Julie. And as always, I have, I have a few questions for you. I would say I'd be brief, but everybody knows that that's not in my nature. I don't think I even know how to spell the word. First question.
I don't either, Mr. Jackson.
Well, it is a five-letter word, I think. Will ESER funds be used for summer school, and why is that appropriate if they are?
We have a variety of funding sources that will be used for summer school, including ESER, and that is very appropriate because, as you know, there is a percent of the ESER funds that must be used for learning loss, so this is a very appropriate expenditure for ESER funds.
Have you done an analysis of where we stand on reading benchmarks leading up to summer school to help identify the loss of learning from COVID? And did you do this analysis by different categories such as Title I versus non-Title I, or by demographic subpop groups as defined originally in the No Child Left Behind legislation?
Yes, sir, we did. We actually looked at the first DPM, which has our baseline for reading levels for the year, and then we looked at our second DPM, and so that, those are our, like our benchmarks. And then we compared them, compared the two, the beginning, the beginning and the mid, and looked at the reading level so that we could see the number of students who were not or that were on level, those that were not on level, and then we broke it down even further to indicate the students that were not on level, those that were making progress, those that have made one level progress, those that had made two level progress, and then also those who had made no progress. And yes, we broke that down by, by the different subgroups. We even broken down by gender as well, so that, so that we could look at all that, and then we have sent the report to the campuses. And for the students who have made no progress, the campuses actually got the name of the student, so that they could go in there and develop their plan. We'll look at the interventions they're providing, making sure that they're, they're being impactful, and then develop a plan for those students as well.
And have you shared a summary report with the board members themselves of this analysis?
Yes, sir, I did.
Thank you. The, so here's the tougher question. You've taken a look at where we are reading loss-wise, you've analyzed it. We know in the past we've had this program. Why do you, why do we think, why do you think that the summer school program that you have prepared and designed will be effective in addressing the learning loss that we're facing?
So after every program, summer program that we have, Mr. Jackson, we do an analysis of the program. So for example, for Camp Summit, we, we have the reading levels that they ended with, and then we look at the reading levels that they're beginning the, the school year, the school year with. And then we also will look for qualitative information from the campuses, like for example, you know, little Tom is just more excited about reading now than he's ever been. So we look at both quantitative and qualitative information. Camp, Algebra Camp, for example, we will look, as you know, Algebra Camp is for our students in eighth grade who are not successful on the STAR test. And so we look to see, once, once we, once the algebra test is given, to see how those kids did, those that went to Algebra Camp as compared to those who didn't. So we always do an evaluation of our programs. And, I'm sorry, if I can add one more thing, as you and I have talked many times about, in addition to, to the learning loss, it also is a great assistance with a summer slide.
So to distill down what, what you told me is, we're going to continue to use those techniques that have been very successful in the past, and we expect them to be successful again this summer. Is that a good summary?
That is correct.
You've already indicated that you have measured individual students. Through this summer, will we be measuring progress by students on both an individual and group basis?
Yes, absolutely.
And you indicated that when you did the analysis this wintertime, that you passed the information on individuals to the individual campuses. I presume that you will share the individual results with the individual campuses as well. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you. I would like to take out of order and move up 9E. We have some people here to answer questions if needs be, and they can leave as opposed to waiting to longer until we get to it. 9E. The Board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractors and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. 9E1, 2021 Bang Emmett Hamilton Elementary School renovations. 9E2, 2021 Kirk and Reed Elementary School renovations. 9E3, 2021 baseball and softball field renovations, Bridgeland, Cy Park, and Cy Springs. 9E4, 2022 Cyfair High School multi-site master plan, package one. 9E5, 2022 Hancock Elementary School paving addition. 9E6, 2022 baseball and softball scoreboard replacements, infrastructure. 9E7, 2022 baseball and softball scoreboard replacements. 9E8, 2022 Bridgeland High School field turf replacement. Presenter will be Matt Morgan on a question basis, and I'll start to my left. Luke, do you have any questions? Debbie.
I have one question. Um, there he is. Hey, Matt. Regarding 9E8, the Bridgeland High School football field turf replacement, that's a fairly new high school, so I'm just curious, why does the turf already have to be replaced?
That turf is about five years old, and usually the life on a turf is about 10, but there were some manufacturing issues with this turf, so Helles is replacing this at their own cost.
Okay.
The reason there's a board agenda item is we're gonna go ahead and take the opportunity to upgrade the turf and add a logo, put cool infield in, and add some shock resistant for student safety.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That answers my question.
Yes, ma'am.
Julie.
Excellent.
Scott Gilbert.
Matt, how are the, the projects coming along? Are they all on schedule? Are we, again, the supply question, you know, getting them in and, and on time?
There have been some supply chain issues and manpower issues, but we feel confident that we'll meet the substantial completion dates on the majority of our projects.
Right.
We were very successful this summer, and we had a shorter window and the same obstacles.
Okay, good. I was just wondering how, usually that's my question with Tom, with the AC question and me with the schedules.
To qualify, this is how I feel now. Further down the road, how I feel.
We're looking for a dry spring.
A dry spring, yes.
We are looking for a dry spring, and we're looking for supply chain issues to resolve themselves and manpower issues to resolve themselves, but everything, we have some really good GCs on these projects.
Well, we, we look forward to seeing all of them. Thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir.
You know, just, just to add to that, I'd also, you know, our construction folks just did a, a great job because we got all of our major, major projects started before you saw the real spike in inflation. So we had all those bids in, and I've talked to several of our architects, and they said anything that we hadn't done already would be 20 to 25% higher, so we are very thankful that we got in under the wire on that. Great job, these guys, getting it, getting it on the street.
Well, we've got a great facilities department, great A and E teams, and we work with great contractors, so we feel very fortunate.
Matt.
Yes, sir.
You know you're not gonna get off that easy. First, if you would, introduce any of our guests from outside the school district.
Mark French with IBI Architects. You can stand up, Mark. If I've got to introduce you, you've got to stand up. Rudy Starks with VLK Architects. Brandon Ross, I think he's with PBK, that's right. And Carolina with NATEC.
Welcome. So, back to you, Matt.
I was hoping that was it, sir.
Uh, no, sir. So for 9E1 and 9E2, these are big numbers. Briefly explain what the renovations are for, and of course, my standard question, we're, we're always fighting the, the battle that, that was before us, but, but we have to keep in mind flooding concerns.
Yes, sir. So these two contracts are for the safety and security components of the 19 bond. Security for open concept classrooms, segmentation is another word that we use for it, impact-resistant glass, additional card readers, all the work that you saw completed this summer, we're gonna be completing at these campuses this following summer.
You mentioned that.
And none of these facilities have flooded, and they are not in a flood plan.
Thank you. You mentioned that these renovations included security upgrades, including segmentation. Will all elementary schools be eventually addressed in this fashion?
Yes, sir.
Why is it that we just don't address all of them in one contract at one time?
For, well, for two main reasons. Number one, we can only sell so many bonds without impacting the tax rate, which is very important to us. But also, we have limitations on design resources, construction resources, and the small window of time that we do this work in, which is mostly the summer, it kind of limits the number of projects that we can tackle at a time.
So it's on a phased-in basis?
It's on a phased-in basis, and this bond has seven phases. All of the elementary schools were moved to the first four phases because we, that was a priority.
So we will eventually upgrade security at all the elementary schools, is that correct?
All schools. We have security upgrades for elementary, middle, and high school.
You mentioned in the literature that there's a kitchen addition at Reed. Question is, have we done this at other schools, i.e., is this part of a standard upgrade concept that we're employing?
This is a standard upgrade. We're bringing all the kitchens, well, as many kitchens as we can, up to about 3,600 square feet. We completed seven last summer, we have several this summer, and each phase there are kitchen renovations.
There's also something different about the kitchen renovations that's, that in my mind is also part of security. The old kitchens for our newer board members, you had a solid wall. And for these kitchen upgrades, and I presume it's correct, but I have to ask, will they have more glass now so that you can see into the cafeteria serving lines?
Yes, sir. The old roll-down metal grates, we are not doing those anymore. These are all storefront.
Very good. You have answered my question why Helles was the only bidder on the, on the turf.
We had two bidders on the turf. We had Helles and Field Turf.
Right, but for the replacement?
Oh, for, oh, yes, sir, for Bridgeland.
On the Cyfair High School multi-site master plan, we have only Jostland.
Yes, sir.
Are we concerned that we have only one bidder?
We always want as much participation in our proposals as we can get. This package was strictly a civil package because we're starting, this Cyfair multi-campus project has three different phases to it, so this is just civil. So we were expecting a limited number of proposals, all from civil contractors. Unfortunately, some of the civil contractors had to bow out the morning of the bid due to manpower concerns. But we've done a lot of work with Jostland through our GCs as a subcontractor, and the price that they gave us was under our projected cost, so we feel like we got a good value.
Everybody on the Board knows what this proposal is, but this is a big number. If you would, explain to the viewing audience and the audience in attendance what 9E4 is all about, what it's supposed to do.
Which one is 9E4? I don't.
9E4 is the 2022 Cyfair High School multi-site master plan, package number one.
So with the Cyfair multi-site plan, we are going to reorientate, reorient the sports fields to north-south, or east-west, actually, and we're going to put baseball, softball fields in, like we have done the other schools. We're also going to repave the band parking lot. We're also doing mitigation, which is what this project is, it's detention, and we'll be developing a road that will run all the way through the Cyfair site, Arnold Lampkin, and connect with Old Matsky Road from Telgi Road. So it's quite a So it's quite a, it's going to take several different packages to get this work done. This is the first package, which is, if you look at the upper north corner for my Old Matsky and Cypress North Houston, we're going to be clearing that area, putting in a detention pond there, and preparing some site utilities for the next packages.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So clearing the area that, right now, had the Little League fields on it, right?
Yes, sir.
The Little League fields, my little baby boy played T-ball on and stuff, right?
Mine, too, Gilbert.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As long as the detention pond looks nice.
We will, I'll, if I find some relics, I'll bring them to you, sir.
Oh, I bet you can. Thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions on 9E? There are none.
Thank you.
Our guests, thank you for being here. Back to the agenda. Agenda item 7A, under reports, will be presented at the regular board meeting on Thursday, March 10th, 2022. The Board will now review the following consensus action item. The Board will consider approving the minutes of the February 14th, 2022, regular board meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes? Looking to my left, to my right, that will stay on the consent agenda. The Board will now review the following non-consensus action items. 9A. The Board will consider approving the administration's recommendation for the 2022-2023 open-close campus designation for student transfers. Do we have a presentation from Teresa Hull and Christy Jerome this evening, or is it questions only?
No, there's a presentation.
Please.
Okay. As you know, this is an annual agenda item for the Board to approve the designation of campuses open for voluntary student transfers. So just for our new members, just wanted to give you a little bit of background of how that's structured and how we make that determination of the campuses that we recommend. As you know, campuses, or students, rather, are assigned to campuses based on their attendance boundary, where their primary residence is located. So once we go through the enrollment projection process every spring, which we're in the process of completing right now, we look at those projected enrollments and then the capacity of each campus without having to move portable buildings around, and is there space for some additional students for voluntary student transfers? So that's kind of how we go through the process. In addition to that, there are some campuses that are more desirable. Many years ago, we had made a modification to our policy to allow employees to transfer students to different campuses. Maybe it was a campus where the employee worked, or it was a campus in close proximity to where they worked. And so there was just a variety of reasons. So what we have created in FDB, both our local policy and in the regulation, we've identified three different tiers. So tier one, that's going to be the campuses that are less than 95% of their capacity. So they have room for voluntary student transfers. And we monitor the number of students that are allowed to transfer based on that capacity, right? So we don't want to exceed that and reach a point where we're having to move portable buildings to accommodate student growth. And we also have to be mindful of new students enroll in the different campuses. So tier one's going to be a campus that's open for a specified number transfer, whether it's an employee or just a parent that is requesting that. Tier two, this is a campus that has exceeded that 95% capacity, but we know that employees, especially those that may work at campuses in, in close proximity or in the area, may wish to transfer their child to that campus. So tier two's going to be closed for just any voluntary transfer and open for employees only. Tier three, this is reaching campuses that really are far exceeding their capacity. They really do not have room for additional students. However, we do recognize when you, you know, teachers that work in an assigned campus may want to bring their children. Or, perfect example is the Cypress Ranch complex, where we have Cypress Ranch, we have Smith Middle School, and we have Warner Elementary. Teachers that teach at those campuses, it's likely that they're going to want to be able to bring their children with them to one of those campuses. So we would open it up for employees who have children, or for employees who work in those assigned attendance boundaries. It's not just the campus, it could be a transportation facility, for instance. Could be the police department next to Arnold Middle School or Cy Fair High School. So we don't limit it to just campuses. So just a little bit about our timeline. We're asking that you approve the designations for open and closed campuses on Thursday evening, March 10th, and then immediately following your approval, we'll begin all of our communication and sharing of the campuses that are open, so parents can begin thinking about options for their children and employees as well. The April 1st is when we open up the transfer application process. It is a first-come, first-served basis that we go through, but the Student Services Department facilitates that process, and it really is a very seamless and easy process. I don't know if they would always say that, but we don't get many issues or concerns. They handle them. And then our transfer window closes on June 1st. We have to close it on June 1st for a number of reasons, especially for our campus principals in determining staffing and knowing exactly what they need to plan for and prepare for for the next school year. But we do feel that that is sufficient time for parents to make those decisions about a campus that they may want their child to attend. The different communication methods, you can see there, there are a lot of ways that we push out this information, the district website, obviously, social media is an excellent plant for, platform for that. Campus newsletters, our employee connection, our community connection newsletters, building and campus bulletin boards, our school messenger. So there are a variety of ways that we communicate this opportunity. And most employees and parents that are interested in this are very aware of the window and the timeline and are looking for that information. The applications, they're available in the registrar's office. If a parent does not have access to technology, they can get it off of the website, and then the window again is April 1 through June 1. So for the 22-23, just keep in mind what I said about tier one campuses. Tier one campuses are those that we're opening for all parents and employees, and there are 50 campuses that will be open. So there are a lot of options for parents that are interested in possibly their child attending a different school. We know there are a variety of reasons why a parent may be looking for some different options or choices in students as well. So we have six high schools, 11 middle schools, and 33 elementary schools. Here you can see a list of those campuses that will be designated as open. Again, a lot of options there, different areas of the district, and quite a few options at each level. So I'll just give you a minute to kind of look at that. I don't want to read through all of that. So that's tier one. Okay? So as we move to tier two, tier two campuses, these are the campuses that will be open for employees only, right? They've exceeded that 95%, so we really need to control that number of student transfers at those campuses. There are 10 high schools, 18 middle schools, and 53 elementary schools that will fit in the tier two. Instead of listing all of those, I think the easiest way for you to think about this, it's going to be all of the campuses except our tier three campuses, which I'm going to in just a minute. So our tier three campuses, we have two high schools, as you can imagine, Bridgeland and Ranch, they're far exceeding their capacity, their projected enrollment is pretty high. Smith Middle School, again, needs relief with Middle School 20 scheduled to open in the 23-24 school year. Four elementary schools, Hancock. And Hancock is kind of interesting. I think Hancock is more about that footprint of that campus, that has a smaller footprint. I think their capacity is like 856, because it's an older building. And then Renell, obviously, Town Lake is growing, and we're seeing, and that kind of ties into the Ranch numbers as well. And then M. Robinson and Sheridan are far exceeding their capacity, and we know that they will get relief with Elementary 58, that's also scheduled to open in the 23-24 school year. So again, tier two is all of the campuses except those, right? And those campuses will be made open for employees that work at a site, facility, or campus within the attendance zone for those various campuses. So that is the end of my, and I hope it was brief, so just...
Tom, before you go to questions, just to add one thing, and I didn't hear Teresa say this, so if she did, I apologize. But one of the issues that we're dealing with, also, this is a great recruiting tool for us for employees, when children, or teachers or employees know that their kids can more than likely go with them to their school or their school zone.
Great point.
And that's become very important.
Let me start to the right. Scott, questions? Natalie.
Thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate the, using very current information so that there's the most options possible for families, because I think every time we can provide choice for families, that's excellent. And Dr. Henry's comment, our teachers are so critical, they are the front line, and all our staff, and the fact that we're able to provide that even down to that tier, I think is excellent and responsive. I think our greatest challenge in these times ahead is we're keeping, maintaining, keeping, recruiting high-quality teachers for our students, so I think this is great and helpful. I do have a question about the process, it may go this direction. In this transfer process, is this an approval by principle? Is this just any kid who puts in an application? What are the criteria upon which a child is either accepted or not accepted for a district transfer?
They submit their application within the window, the transfer window, if they meet the timeline. And then also, I think Student Services looks if the student has had a transfer revoked from that campus, either, probably, I think, the greatest reason, or the biggest reason why Student Services or the campus may revoke a transfer is attendance and their transportation and ability to be there. If it's impacting, obviously, the student's ability to attend school, we may need to get them back to their campus that's closest to their residence, so they can have transportation provided.
So that would be revoking between, let's say they were already on a transfer prior, or during the middle of the school year?
Correct.
Or what's that look like?
It could be a student that is applying for a transfer for the first time, if they meet that window, and we have not exceeded the number of students that we're allowed to, are able to accept, then they're approved.
So there's not great, like, behavior?
No.
Or grades?
No.
Or anything like that?
No.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's my last question.
Gilbert?
Yes, Teresa, on the Hancock, with the low numbers that it's, how did you put it? It was the, their capacity amount? With all the construction they just had, did that not get raised up?
I'll have to have Mr. Morgan. The capacity I have listed is 856, I believe, so I'm not sure if we've added any classroom space to Hancock.
For the most part, when we go in and do a renovation, we may do a classroom expansion, but we're only adding square feet, so we lead the program in the same as it was before. In some cases, we do add a classroom and increase capacity, but for the most cases, it stays about the same.
Okay.
So Hancock, we added four classrooms. I believe the capacity will be the same.
Capacity, Teresa, was like 856.
856.
Which is very small for one of our elementary campuses.
Hancock is at 856. That's their capacity without portables, and their projected enrollment is 1014. So they're far exceeding. So we already have portables out there to accommodate the students that...
In years past, they had a chance, I believe, they had an option to go to Matsky. I think Jaeger's full also, as well, so...
Yeah, as you know, annually, there are different campuses that are open as an option, so...
Okay. I was just wondering, because there was a lot of construction going on there for a while, so... All right. Thank you.
Luke? Debbie? Julie? Yes. So we have a number of campuses that are open, but do we have both Title I as well as non-Title I campuses open, so that if parents wanted to choose to send their child to a Title I or to a non-Title I, that they have that option?
Yes. At every level, you'll see a variety of campuses.
We talked about capacity of campuses. When I sat in the audience years ago, and this was during the 20% budget cutback that hit this district, but also hit the entire state, this district at the time redefined the campus capacity, permitting more children to be in each classroom. Have we, when we talk about capacity now, is it the original capacity as designed and calculated, or are we still using the budget cutback capacity consideration?
It's my understanding we're using the original capacity limits, not the cutback capacities, when we increased class sizes to accommodate the reduction we were making in staff, so...
That's my understanding as well. And for the new board members, I ask that question each and every year. It was fairly brutal when we had the 20% cutback to walk into a classroom to see how crowded these classrooms actually were. One way this district was able to achieve efficiencies on a construction basis is we literally just had fewer square feet in our schools than some of the neighboring districts, which works fine until you experience rapid growth. So thank you for affirming that we're using the original design capacity. And we've already talked about that this does, in fact, reflect school choice, but you also indicated how this choice and why it could be pulled back. I do have a question, though. Are athletes free to move from campus to campus?
They, absolutely. I mean, any student can transfer, but there are UIL implications. So a parent or a student may choose to transfer to another campus, and it's mostly a varsity athletics issue, but there are UIL implications that the student is ineligible for varsity athletics participation for one calendar year.
Very good. Thank you. Next, we will take a look at...
Do you want to go consensus or non-consensus?
Oh. Good reminder. Thank you, sir. May we move this to consent agenda, or do we want to keep it on non-consent? Consent? Consent. Done. 9B. The Board will consider approving the Center Point Energy Houston Electric LLC blanket utility easement to provide electrical service for the new Transportation Center Number Six and authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate the final terms and execute all related documents. Questions? Luke? Debbie? Julie? Scott? Natalie? Gilbert? And I have no questions. May we move this to non-consent? It's moved to non-consent?
Consent?
Consent. Okay, I'm going to take a break and get a sip of tea. Some candy? No, thank you. 9C. The Board will consider approving on first reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. 9C1, CH Local Purchasing and Acquisition Revised. 9C2, CAT Local Purchasing and Acquisition Vendor Disclosures and Contracts, Delete. 9C3, EFD Local Instructional Resources Field Trips, Delete. 9C4, EHB Local Curriculum Design Special Programs, Add. 9C5, EHBAA Local Special Education Identification, Evaluation, and Eligibility, Add. 9C6, FMF Local Student Activities Contest and Competition, Delete. Now for questions. Let me go to the right. Natalie? Gilbert? And to the left, Luke?
I do have a question. I'd like to just understand better 9...
I do have a question. I'd like to just understand better 9C dot six, so student activities, contests, and competitions. I'd like to understand better what it means to state that it's being incorporated into FM regulation.
Marnie, is this, are you up for this one? Did, did I catch you napping over there?
Yes.
No, it's actually Mr. Garcia's, but I would be happy to support him in any way.
I feel much better now, for sure, definitely. Yes, I can definitely share with you. This is currently in policy, and the verbiage will remain the same, but we are moving it into a regulation, and it is in concert with 9C3. Likewise, that EFD local policy, that is also being moved to the same regulation, FM regulation. As we looked at this, and in that one, instructional resources, field trips, involving the curriculum instruction accountability and the school leadership team, and working in concert with our general counsel behind me, we felt it was more appropriate to be in regulation, and that's what's taking place there. Does that help?
I've just, in looking at our policies, Mr. Scanlon, just kind of a broader picture on both of these, is that policies really are the direction, the board sets the policies, here's the direction that I want you to go, and regulations should be more like the turn-by-turn directions, and so you guys tell us to go, you know, you, north on I-45 to get to Dallas, but when our policies have, you know, take the Beltway if you've got a toll tag, and, you know, in, in our policy, then I, then I encourage the administration, this needs to be moved to reg, so it can be, you know, it can, it can be more usable, and if you need to change it, et cetera, and so that's some, that's what we're trying to do. We've been trying to do that for a little while, go through the policies, and if there's too much detail, then we need to move that to regulation. So those were a couple that-
And that makes me think of the, the what versus the how, and with her example that she mentioned, how do you do this, and how the administration, campus principals, others will, will abide by that policy.
All right. Thank you for the clarification.
So Natalie, I'll be back. Let me finish on this side. Debbie? Julie? Back to the right. Natalie?
That raises the question, are you just going straight through them, or as issues arise and you see that it's full of detail, or what made these ones, being that they're a C and E and F, come to the forefront now?
Sometimes it's looking at the policy and making sure that our current practice is in concert with that policy. Things change over, over years. For example, you're talking about field trips. I'll go back to that time that Tom had mentioned before, when there was a budget cut, we made some changes with field trips, so just making sure that we are aligned, if you will, with the policy and the regulations.
And I will say, it sometimes changes because, you know, we try to make all the changes at once, so if we're reviewing a policy for another reason, and then we may look at a cluster of policies, but it's not really been a systemic, you know, or maybe systematic is the better word, you know, process. But we're going to focus on regulations in the next year, and so then that will probably end up being a little more lockstep in how we go through it in the next year.
We have a section in here that deals with dyslexia. My son is a dyslexic. Would you comment briefly about what caused the change and, and what this provides?
Are you talking about EHB?
Well, I don't have my notes in front of me. You have required training for teachers for dyslexia.
Oh, that's what, that's the change in the law.
Yeah. So, Mr. Jackson, both 9CB and 9C5 are actually two policies that we are having to put in as a result of the evaluation we're going through for special ed. And you might recall, or you may recall that I shared, that the audit we're going through with special ed is a cyclical audit, so all districts have to go through it. It's just our turn. And as part of that, these two policies we were asked to put in.
Excellent. Thank you for the clarification. So, may we move 9C as a cluster to consent agenda? We have agreement. So 9C is on the consent agenda. 9D, "The board will consider awarding bids and contracts and/or authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item." 9D1, Layer 2 and 3 switches, E-rate. 9D2, library books, reference books, eBooks, publications, and media supplies. 9D3, school buses. 9D4, wireless access, access points and switches, E-rate. To the right. Any questions? Scott? Natalie? Gilbert? To the left, Luke?
Nope.
Debbie? Julie? Well, golly, that leaves it to me. Paula, where are you?
Yes, sir, Mr. Jackson.
So, we have 9D1 and 9D4. 9D1 deals with Layer 2 and 3 switches, E-rate, recommended vendor of NetSync. 9D4, wireless access points and switches, E-rate. These are big numbers. So a couple of questions. One, is this new equipment or replacement? Two, was NetSync Network Solutions the low bidder, and if not, why did we select them? Briefly explain how this equipment is used. What in the world is E-rate? Why do we like it? And do we immediately receive it if it's good, or is follow-up action required?
Okay. Let me start with the first question, and if I've missed one or two, please remind me. But, but the, the equipment is for both new and replacement. We are be, we are opening Elementary School 57, the new VPAC and the new admin center, so we need new switching hardware for that and wireless access points, plus this summer we'll be working with facilities on renovations, and we'll be putting in new equipment there as well. The new equipment was part of Bond 2019 allocation. We'd planned for this. As far as NetSync, NetSync was the, the chosen respondent for the Layer 2 or Layer 3 switching, and NetSync was not the lowest bidder. Just to give you a brief history, with Bond 2014, we chose a best-of-breed approach whenever we replace network switches, and with that, best-of-breed sounds, sounds really good, but with that comes a, a couple of problems. We have some interoperability problems, and we have to, our staff needs a wide variety of skill set to support the variety of manufacturers. So, for example, we have almost 3,000 switches that are deployed in the network, and a little over 12,000 access points, and these, these switches run from the, we have core-level switches all the way to a campus. If I use one campus as an example, Cypress Parks High School has 12, has 26 network closets, one MDF, which is the primary closet for connectivity to the campus, and then 25 other IDF closets. So each one of these closets need network switching for connectivity. As far as to explain how the connectivity works, at a very high level, each site in our district is connected to the ISC data center, and this was our original data center. Again, with Bond 2014, we were able to expand to a second data center, Cyrus 1. For us to have a connectivity to the new data center, Cyrus 1, it's very expensive to run a connected connection from every site. So with Bond 2014, we implement, implemented a hub approach. So every site in the district is connected to the primary data center, ISC, and then they have a secondary connection to a hub, which ultimately takes them to the Cyrus 1 data center connection. So the way this works is each site, whether it be a wired or wireless connection, it connects to their network closet. The traffic will flow to, through the fiber, ultimately to the ISC data center, or the hub data center, and then to Cyrus 1 to get connectivity to applications or internet connectivity. E-rate. What is E-rate? So, E-rate is not something that, that we have to do, but E-rate is a federally funded program, and the way it works, Cypress Fairbanks, we're very fortunate that we have bond funding to be able to perform the, the network upgrades, so we pay for our upgrades up, up front, and then we, on the backend, apply for E-rate reimbursement. And E-rate reimbursement falls into two categories. The first category is internet access, and the second category is a cabling, switches, wireless access points. So what we, what we'll do is, we will apply for federal reimbursement, and the reimbursement is based upon our current free and reduced rate, which is 80%. So we will receive up to 80% reimbursement for our bond expenditures for switches and wireless access points. Have I missed, was there more?
No, but I have a follow-up question. So that means we have to make an application?
Yes, sir.
And is there a, is the application time-sensitive?
Yes, sir, it is. For example, we have, you'll notice we have switches on both of these RFPs. We are currently running a pilot with HPE switches and Cisco switches at two campuses. The reason that we went ahead to bring this to the board before our pilot is complete is because the E-, we must follow the E-rate calendar, and these RFPs needed to be presented to the board and seek board approval by the end of March, so that we can take advantage of this year's E-rate funding calendar.
So talk to us about how the pilot is proceeding.
It, it, it's going well. What we are doing is, we are introducing additional, well, number one, like I, I mentioned, we're trying to reduce the interoperability issues that we're having with different vendors, but with this, we're also seeking additional security measures. We're hoping to, we're in the process of implementing a NAC, or a Network Access Control, or Center, for both wired and wireless devices. So that's in process right now.
Now, I'll borrow Gilbert's question. Do we anticipate being able to receive all of this equipment?
Yes, sir. We are also dealing with supply chain issues, but we, we do believe that we can, we are going to receive equipment.
And does that impact our E-rate application if the equipment does not arrive as scheduled?
With E-rate, we have 18 months to deploy a project, and for example, if we seek, if we obtain board approval for switches this eve, this evening, or Thursday evening, we will begin to order, but with E-rate, we cannot receive, again, to follow their E-rate calendar, we cannot receive hardware and begin deploying until April 1st. So that starts the E-rate calendar, and then we have 18 months to complete that. And if we should exceed 18 months, we can, we can apply for an extension.
Excellent. And then, then one question, which is kind of, kind of puts the bow on top of it, and this one may not be for you, but I'll ask it anyway. These are big numbers. How does this benefit our students? Because that's what we're all, all hear about, and all I hear you talking about are, are switches and layers and hubs and closets. I keep brooms in my closets, and, so, so how does this benefit our students?
Yes, sir. With our newly deployed one-to-one program, this provides connectivity for all of our students constantly for 24 by 7 learning.
And, and clearly, that's one, but it also provides other communication across the district as, as well, and benefits our teachers.
Yes, sir.
Excellent summary, and thank you for, for preparing very, very good and concise answers to my questions. I wish my questions could be as concise.
Mr. Jackson, I also-
We do have some experts on, on the board. I thought you might have some follow-up questions. Luke?
Thank you. Have you had the opportunity to do any analysis to find out what the bandwidth or the, for all the connectivity, there's probably a, a portion of web activity of students that would be going to non-learning versus learning. Do you guys have any feel for what is being served up and what you're hosting?
We have bandwidth, and we have bandwidth monitoring tools to see what sites they're going to with the internet filtering. We're also monitoring which sites. To specifically answer your questions, a question whether it's educational or noneducational, I do not have that data, but I could get that for you.
So I would assume that overall, part of the plan is to ensure that we've got sufficient bandwidth to manage the things that we believe are appropriate to manage.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
And to the right, my other expert.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll send you questions. The email would be easier.
Okay, thank you.
I do have some follow-up questions, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paula.
Sure.
Now, other questions? We covered 9D1 and 9D4. Gilbert, did you have a question on 9D2 or 9D3?
Yes, I have a couple of questions on 9D3. The buses to our award-winning transportation team, Mr. Kyle, Mr. Smith, whoever wants to get them. So I'm always amazed on how y'all do your job there with all the logistical problems going on and stuff. Are the new buses, we getting gasoline, propane, mixture of both?
These that we're purchasing at this time are propane.
Propane?
Yes, sir.
And is that price going up, or is that staying relatively calm?
It's funny you should ask that. Dr. Smith has the, today's prices.
Excellent question.
So needless to say, we've been reviewing these prices almost on a daily basis.
Right.
And as of today, the rack rate for propane, which is basically what the daily base rate for propane is, is $1.50 a gallon, as opposed to propane unleaded is at 3.28 a gallon, and diesel is at 3.72 a gallon. So we're seeing a significant price reduction or price savings with the propane fuel right now.
Is, is that also in, in mileage compare, or is that comparable to the gasoline?
The propane buses get about half a mile less per gallon than the gasoline, but it's not enough to over offset the savings that we're having on the current cost.
And, and by your words, when you started, it sounded like this is a daily flux going on here?
It is. Just to give you some data, in July, we were paying $1.24 for diesel, $1.19 for unleaded, and 97 cents for propane. So we've seen a significant increase just in the past eight months.
Right. Logistical problems getting the buses in? Are we okay with them?
As of right now, we should be good. I believe the build date on these buses is 180 days, which is normal. I feel like the supply chain situation has been improving as of late. We ordered the big purchase through the 2019 bond back in, I think it was November, and we have received all those buses. So I think it's improving.
Right. And, and what percentage are we at right now on replacing the ones that you had targeted on replacing?
If I remember right, we're right at like 98%. We're very close.
Oh, excellent idea. And one last question. What do we do with our old buses?
We auction them, and in fact, we have some other school districts who are calling, asking to buy them, so they can utilize them.
Okay. Thank you for all the answers.
You're welcome.
Our award-winning transportation department.
Thank you.
I do have some follow-up questions, although, Gilbert, I think you, you very nicely handled those. And some of these are for our viewing audience. We all know about a two-mile rule and a one-mile rule about picking up students. What is our rule within the district?
So Cyfer ISD, we're very unique. We afford transportation to every student in the district, other than those that are voluntary transfers. So no matter where you live, if you're not a voluntary transfer, we'll pick you up and give you a ride to school.
What percentage of our students are bus riders, and do we think this helps our students arrive on time and, and helps to get them into the classroom?
Right now, we're at about 70% ridership, which is well above the state average, which is, I believe, around 35 to 40%. And when you look at some of our loading zones and the car rider lines, I feel like those school buses do definitely help get students to school on time. I believe the averages, each bus takes off about 35 cars off the road. So each one of those buses does significantly help get students to school on time, both the bus riders and the car riders.
I know during COVID, our bus ridership was down dramatically. Has our bus ridership- Has our bus ridership gone back to pre-COVID levels?
We're not quite at pre-COVID levels yet, but we're getting very close.
Years ago, a question that I asked, and the viewing audience who has seen me several times, you know I no longer have any original questions. But this one was back when Harold Rowe was here. And the question was, what are the pros and cons of the propane decision? And why is propane potentially a superior choice?
Well, for us.
And a little background on that, although we approved the purchase, we were not, we did not win the contract. So we actually delayed our purchase of propane buses, but we had studied it.
Well, and to give you a little bit of background, in 2018? We bought the first 13? So in 2018, we bought the first 13. And we saw a significant reduction in operating costs, cost per mile, up to 60 cents less than what it costs to operate a diesel school bus. Of course, we're seeing the reduced fuel cost. And on top of that, we get a 35 cent per gallon rebate from the federal government. So that $1.50 we're paying right now will actually get 35 cents back per gallon that we utilize on our propane buses. So we're seeing a significant savings. Not to mention, honestly, the drivers have loved them. I don't personally drive one, but all the drivers around me drive one. I got one of the older ones. But they love them. They've been very successful for us, which is why we've made the investment. And we're at 336 propane buses now on the fleet, which I believe is the second-largest propane school bus fleet in the nation.
From a ridership standpoint, are propane buses quieter or louder?
Much, much quieter. Much quieter and honestly, much cleaner. Much cleaner for the environment. They only emit .02 NOx emissions, as opposed to a diesel bus, which can be up to .08. And some of our older ones were in the single digits, 2.0 NOx per emission.
I know talking to bus drivers, and my old tennis partner used to be a bus driver, he made the observation that when the buses were quieter, the children or students were quieter and would arrive in a better frame of mind. But of course, that was pre-COVID. Do we still see the same anecdotal observations now?
You know, we haven't done an analysis of our ridership in our propane buses just yet. This is really the first year we've rolled out a large number of propane buses. But there are studies out there that have been done, university studies, that show propane school buses and even electric school buses do decrease any kind of student misconduct on a school bus because it is quieter, the driver can hear the students better, there's not as much yelling over that roar of a diesel engine.
And now to a Gilbert question that he did not ask, or if he did, I didn't hear him. There is undoubtedly a looming gasoline shortage that is going to hit us. We just don't know when. I would presume there's going to be a propane shortage as well. Do you have any comments about that concern?
We haven't heard that concern just yet. We work very closely with our vendor for all three fuel sources. We talk to them probably honestly daily, but we have not heard any of those concerns addressed just yet.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. If you don't mind, just real quick, also part of this purchase, we were awarded a $6 million grant from TCEQ, Texas Commission of Environmental Quality. So that actually significantly offsets this purchase price. I believe the quote came in at roughly over $10 million. But that $6 million will offset that significantly. So we are going to see a significant cost reduction in this purchase as well.
Thank you for adding that in. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
9D2. Maybe this is for Linda or maybe for Bill Powell. I don't know who wants this one. This could be a hot potato. We're talking about buying library books, reference book, eBooks, publications and media supplies. Do we have a screening process in place for the books being selected? Briefly comment. And our libraries already have books. Why do we need to keep buying more books?
So Mr. Jackson, first of all, I just want to share that we're very fortunate, thankful that you, the board, has allowed us to have a media specialist, a librarian, at all of our campuses. And so they are our book experts. And we really value and we seek out their expertise when we are looking or evaluating books. We do have policies in place that guide us in the process of selecting books. So we have EF local and legal that actually lay out for us what we need to do in selecting books. In addition, our librarians read many of the books before they're purchased, but they can't read all of them. There's tons of books. And so they also use a variety or various widely accepted professional and educational tools, tools such as book journals that provide reviews and provide information about the book. So there's a wide array of ways that they actually screen books and select books. And actually, this process of reviewing books is ongoing. This is like an everyday thing for our librarians. They call this process weeding. And it's a process they follow where they're looking to see, are there any inappropriate books that have made it into the library? Or are there any that are not age-appropriate that have made it into the library? And then they will remove them. Or in some cases, they send it on to the next level. They also will look for books that have been worn or they're obsolete, maybe facts have changed. And so this is a process that is ongoing for our librarians. And as you know as well, Mr. Jackson, that there is a process for our parents to challenge a book or ask for reconsideration of a book process. And then there's a committee on campus that again, looks at those books, screens those books, and make a decision about whether those books need to be kept or not. Additionally, we have established at the district level, a committee, and that committee includes librarians, it includes a counselor, principals, a parent, it includes our directors, some directors of instruction, and our English Language Arts coordinators are part of this committee. And they are reviewing, they continue to review any books that come to our attention that we need to possibly take a look at. And then as a committee, making decisions about those books. So it's an ongoing process.
So is it safe to presume that we have pulled books this year, just like we always do?
Yes, it's, yes, sir. Every year, yes, every year, we have pulled books, or the librarians have pulled books following the process that's in place.
Very good. Just so long as you don't pull Cat in the Hat.
It'll be there for you to read next year, sir.
Mr. Jackson, I'll share my time when I was a volunteer in the elementary school library where my daughters went to school. That librarian also focused on weeding books for books that were not checked out. Like they were, they just, they were taking up space, but the student population had lost interest in those books, and they were no longer of interest. So that was a great opportunity to weed out those more obsolete books and then bring in new titles that the students were excited about with, from new authors.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Masias. We have already reviewed 9E, but let's go back to 9D. May we move 9D to consent agenda? Looking to my right and to my left. So 9D is on the consent agenda. 9E, we had questions. We did move it to consent, but I first asked, did we want to leave it on non-consent? So just to clarify, we are moving 9E to the consent agenda. Okay. 9F. The board will consider a Level 4 appeal of a Level 3 decision. This item will be discussed in closed session pursuant to Section 551.074 at the end of tonight's work session. The superintendent's briefing portion of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Thursday, March 10, 2022. Agenda item 11A, superintendent's evaluation under the discussion portion of the agenda, will be discussed in closed session at the regular board meeting on Thursday, March 10, 2022. Before we move to the closed session, is there anything that I have left out?
Just one clarification, that the Level 4 appeal is Section 551.0821. Just clarifying.
So we have a change. Thank you, sir. Now, before we move to the closed session, I would like to thank everyone for being here tonight. May I have a motion to move into closed session on Agenda Item 9F as amended?
And it's actually under 551.074.
So I was wrong.
Okay. So as originally presented. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the board move into closed session on Agenda Item 9F.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Done. Thank you. We will now adjourn to closed session.